All the way down.
All right, thank you. All right, welcome everybody to our July eighth work session for the Western Weaver Plan Commission. Looks like we have way more people for a work session than we normally have even for meetings. So this is interesting. You've piqued my my interest or my curiosity here. Items on the agenda tonight are just, these are work session items only. We normally do not take public comment at these meetings. And unless something is so urgent that it needs to be discussed for a public, I am not planning on having rotations, public comment at this meeting tonight. Our first item on the agenda is to discuss a proposed amendment to the zoning map to expand the zoning C two zone boundary. As it aligns with the property lines and extends to the center of forty seven hundred West Street at fourteen hundred South. Well, this property is located on the corner of fourteen hundred South and forty seven hundred West. Parcel number fifteen dash oh fifty four dash oh oh seventy five and oh oh seven three. And then I'm not sure that's.
Yes, I can just give a quick little background. I have some math as well. I'm sure we're pretty well familiar with this. So we've got this, this corner, it was redone a few years ago. But then you've got this little little rectangle right here. And right now, the rectagle fits inside the property. The owner feels like it'd be a more marketable piece, a more usable piece if the zone boundary actually follows the parcel boundary. Because as you can see, it's quite a bit smaller at this point. So that's really the request is. Is adjusting the C two zone boundary for this property to encompass the entire parcel. I'll just pass it on this map and you know.
How much of the parcel do you say is C two then? Any of it at all?
Majority of it is C two.
Yeah, the majority of it.
Do you want to invite the land?
Yes, and that, thank you. The landowner, Mr. Dale Jordan is here and he'd like to also. Sharing in details or further information, be happy to.
Well, thank you for your time. Felix said, I'm Dale Jordan and I do own the property out there. Originally, when I bought the property back in, oh, I think it was around twenty twenty. You may know that the property is the old Davis meet back in place. So we went in and. Totally gutted the building, cleaned it up. There was an old house there that. We've gone in and completely remodeled the inside and still doing some adjustments on the outside. But we've put a lot of money into it. And at that point in time, we didn't have the Gizmo map. And so the. The planning or the zoning had one zoning map. And then if you went to the county, the county had a different zoning map. And then as it all got together and you got the Gizmo map, then Felix came out and he's, he's done a wonderful job of trying to. Figure out what we've been using. But the problem that we have is the C two zoning. Covers the majority of the property and we have just a little outside strip that goes all the way around the outside. And it's going to make it very hard to actually stay within zoning. If I park one of my company trucks. On the outside of the line, then I'm technically in violation. If I put some equipment or if I put. Some insulation and store out there, then I'm technically outside of it. So. We are just requesting an amendment to the line to carry it all the way out. The purpose for that is there's no usable. Pause for the other residential zoning right there. So we can't put a house on it. We can't. Do anything that would do the bag. So that's the reason for our request tonight. Just want to see. What we need to do to move forward.
How wide is that strip, you know?
I can get it rough, that's the conclusion.
Felix, just to make sure I'm looking at this right, the, the C two on the north end that's highlighted, that is the store, right? Country Corner or whatever it's called. Okay.
Yeah, so along the east side from the C two zone boundary to the kest property line, it's about eighty feet. And then measuring from that same point to the south property line, it's about ninety feet.
That's linear though, not width, right?
Yeah, so that's, that's just measuring, yeah, linear.
So that's down the property and then back to the other side. So that width would uncover about eighty feet by twenty five feet.
But the entire parcel itself measures about two hundred and eighty by. Again, these are rough, so. Two eighty by around three twenty.
So it is an acre and a half altogether.
Two point oh six altogether.
Chair, can I ask a question?
No, please.
So. I'm just a little concerned you're wanting to do C two around that. C two, so everything C two?
Yes, sir.
Cause I'm. I know the meat packing plant was C two, but I'm a little concerned about. Zoning everything C two as opposed to C one because C one is more neighborhood commercial. Then you know, this is a neighborhood and you know, there's different uses in the C two that I think could be more impactful. On the neighborhood with C two uses as opposed to C one. If you're willing to entertain, but I'm, or if we do C two, we may want to do some type of development agreement. Associated with it that limits the uses. On C two so that it's not going to have an impact on the neighbors would be, you know, the concern that I would have.
For C two, it's more, it's a more heavy commercials.
Right, yeah. It's more community commercial whereas C one is more neighborhood commercial. And that's a little bit of a concern that I have on that.
Is what's it's always been out?
C two.
It is C two.
C two.
Okay.
The C two, but it's always been, it was a store for decades.
Right.
Right, but I'm running a roofing business out of it now and that would not fall under C one. So then you would move down my job if you go to C two.
Do is we look at some type of development agreement if we're going to consider C two. To protect the neighborhood, limit the uses that happen in the C two. In that area so that, you know, we don't have the uses that are giving an impact on the users.
With a sale or a change of business type.
Right, because you know, right now you. You may be operating that, but C two also offers normally a wide variety of things and. You know, maybe we, you know, with the roofing business, we put certain things into protecting neighbors too with.
I apologize, I'm undersliding. So it's already some of the C two.
It's already a portion of it is.
A portion of those two acres is.
Can you pull that up? Like the part that he wants is like a sliver.
Well. But isn't that more than just a sliver on him?
No, because the part that's already, is already zoned C two, but he only wants a slight part of it to be resolved with it. Right?
What percentage of it is already C eight?
Well, well, the red area is C two already.
And then the blue is.
And then.
Yeah.
The green is, is a.
A one, but I think the opportunity is here to get this zone more properly for, for neighborhood. Rather than for it to be a heavy commercial. But I have one question, Charlie, maybe for staff. We did in the general plan, weren't we going to expand north and south of eleven fifty?
Yep, that's.
With this commercial zone.
That's what I was scrambling for. So here we go.
That is my understanding and with everything expanding out there that is, I think you'd limit yourself if you don't go ahead and move to the C two, but.
So here's your, here's their future land use map for that area. It is slated for mixed commercial, which would be retail storefront types of operations on the street front. Possibility of other kinds of commercial operations above office space or residential even above. So it's kind of a main street style. As an extension from the village main street here. And the reason why we did extend that and pass the down past the tracks is because this property was already something real.
So does the C two fit the intent or practicality of the general plan? Or does the C one fit it better?
Neither.
Yeah.
The general plan, if we were to go strictly with what it says, we would be looking more towards mixed use commercial operations. And so I think Rick's suggestion, recommendation that we, if we're comfortable with the business that's happening now and we want to encourage that, maybe we. Secure that with the development agreement, but that then shifts, maybe it goes to C one, but we put specifically in there what. Can happen that's related to the product, the existing business if we want to keep that one.
Right.
Right, it is.
I'm just a little concerned where. The larger pieces are all C one to the north of there except for the Gibson Corner is C two. And this is right smack dab in a neighborhood area. And this opens a door to try to help protect the neighborhood. And I think we could accommodate, you know, both sides, but we could do it through a development brief. So that, you know, everyone's comes out a win-win on this, but. Felix, when I was looking at the two parcel numbers, one is a sliver, like Emmy mentioned, but then the other one's a little bigger.
It's the one that's on C two, right?
Well, I, when I looked at it, it's that area.
It's the L shape.
Yeah, it's the L shape. And then there's a little sliver.
That's seven six instead of seven five maybe.
Maybe. And then that little sliver is right to the south of that hill.
Get two weird slivers here.
Yeah, you have that little sliver right there. But then you have the bigger L shape that.
Yeah, well, the two, the two slivers are, I don't think those are actually mine. I, I think the one to. The bottom is mine, but the one to the right hand side is not mine. That goes to the house next door because that line actually goes right through the middle of that man's garage.
Yeah, okay, but the L portion, portion of it doesn't show a C two. You're wanting that to be easy to eat that, correct?
Correct, because as you look at it and you see the buildings that are on there, the C two is really right up against the building. So if I even. Park my vehicles to the side or anything like that, then I'm, I'm out of compliance.
Yeah.
Especially if they have a name on them. And so I'm not opposed to even putting. You know, a fence up around the property or something like that, to kind of section us off from the neighbors. Cause we've been real neighbor friendly as it is. We've put a lot of money into that building. I mean, I've put over a hundred grand in that thing, just. Bringing it back to life from where it was. And, and we're in the process of doing that with the, with the old house as well. So. We've added a new, as you see the red top on there, there's an eighty foot metal building there. That was eighty, ninety thousand dollars. So I, I've put a couple hundred thousand dollars of my own money to dress it up. We want it to be part of the, the community and be. You know, a part of the community. We don't want to infringe on our neighbors next to us by any means. So, but I think in the. The locale of it is. The development's coming regardless of whether we do it now or we do it later.
Well, I think to accommodate what's there now, but protect the future, probably a development agreement would be the best way to go.
I agree, that seems like a help him out and you can do protection.
What it eventually sells. What was that?
When it changes over.
Yeah.
I don't know that we've ever.
I should probably mention too is that with, with rezones and, and, and those boundaries typically you like to see the, the zone boundary extend to the center of the street. And so it would extend to the center of forty seven hundred and also the center of fourteen hundred.
There's another thing to think about on this. We don't exactly know. We know that the C two zone was, this might be like original. Zoning, I mean, we're, we know we're more than fifty years ago because we did dive back in the, into the, the past to figure out what's going on. But we don't know what the original legal description of that zone was. Maybe it was the whole property. Maybe. These maps you see here, they were actually hand drawn at one point, converted to a CAD drawing and then imported into GIS and. That, those shifts did not stand true. You've got a round world and a flat piece of paper. They just, they don't always fit that way.
Right, which is what I was saying to begin with. So even the lines that we have now are much more user friendly. But we really don't know where that line is. We really don't have good markings for those lines.
Did you ever look into, how, how far back did you get into all the parcel research and sweep boundary?
You know, I, I didn't go, I didn't go too deep into researching the, you know, trying to find the, the rezone file.
Or the original parcel boundaries?
Yeah, the original, maybe the result ordinance that would help. I'm, I'm not sure that zoning existed when that thing was built.
Yeah.
I mean, that was Depot Grocery and it goes back. Oh, like I said, decades.
Yep.
It's been there for a long time.
And I did a lot of research when we bought the place, but I knew that. If we brought it back to life, that we'd be able to work out of it. But I couldn't find any of that either. And like I said, when I went down to the. The county site to get my permit, then they couldn't tell me where the line was. And then the planning commission had a different line and so. It's been a little difficult.
And, and I don't know about that parcel. I had a lot of parcels left and down the rail line there that were owned by railroad. So, and then of course we're sold by the railroad, you know, and some of them, some of those, some of the rail line is jagged because they didn't sell it. So that it's not, their right of way is not truly straight with the tracks.
Right.
So, I mean, not that that matters, but it just, this, that's how long this thing, you know, it's been there for a long, long time. So, wish there's any other.
Just real quick, if we do the development agreement, that just stays with this well for landowner.
It's depends on how we write it. Most of the time a development agreement will run with the land. So if he were to sell it to someone who's doing the same thing or something else that's allowed in that agreement, then it would stay the same. But. If we wanted to do a development agreement that runs with the business or the current landowner.
I think if it's, if it's fine, I just don't want it. If we're trying to protect it for the future, then they want to, you know, make it to where it goes change. You can't just, yeah, it has to be the same.
Yeah, he's done a great job of bringing, taking that place over there and I don't want to see him. You know, be hurt by the fact that.
Right.
He want, he needs to do what he needs to do to run his business. But in the future, you know. We don't get something there that we don't want in the community at all. I'm, I'm good with that.
Right, but we don't want to deter somebody that may want to buy it and come up and have the same problem I did, which is. Where's the line and do I do it? They may not be as willing to dive off into the water as I was. In fact, none of my people could see the vision when I told them we were going to buy that place. They all. I almost lost my whole company. They were like, you're an idiot, but it's worked really well and. I, I think it's, it's moving forward.
Is it still for sale?
Yes.
Okay. So we.
Everything I have is for sale.
Yes, sir. You know, in the near future. So I.
Can't take it with you. You just as well sell it. Somebody comes along, right?
Are you going somewhere? As long as you're still on land.
Right.
There's a little bit to think about here when it comes to the C two zone, things like gas stations, vehicle oriented uses, those kinds of things are, are permitted in that zone. And so maybe it is a, hey, let's make sure it's good for this business and, and cleaned up so that he could sell it a lot easier. But from, from a landlord's perspective, is it more marketable with just a portion of it being in the C two zone? Leaving it like that or cleaning up the lines and getting someone's here. I think two, two different options there.
Ultimately, if we were, if we were to keep it C two. We just as well push it out where it needs to be as far as I'm concerned because it's not that much more space.
Yeah.
I still like the idea of doing the development agreement because it can still be C two. But it can be a controlled, a more controlled C two. So that's my, that's my take on it. Commissioners?
Cause the L shape is currently what? Is it C two as well? No, it sounds like that's what he's trying to get.
A one.
A one. I agree with what my friend or Burrow said. Give him the whole thing to C two. So it's consistent. Cause even A one, you can't do anything with A one.
Not with that, yeah.
So it makes me sense.
Yeah, it'll just be a nice one.
And the house is still going to be a residence, Sam?
It's an older home and the inside's been redone. And so, yes, we have it rented at this time.
Any thoughts?
No, that's good.
Well, anything else?
We'll work with you on getting something pushed in that direction. You guys should probably see that and maybe one more work session. Talk about development agreement and what the differences are between C two and C one so you can see what happens to that.
On that, do we have to go through a public hearing process?
We do have to do that? Why, why would you do that where it's not usable? Just a question.
Educate me, sorry, to, to expand the C two zone, to do any changes to the map. You've got to go through a public hearing and. It goes to the planning commission and then to the county commission for final decision. It could be a couple of months before decisions.
Perfect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And yeah, I've done a great job over there. Okay. Next item, Alcyon Estates extension rezon review.
It looked seemed to have a little bit more information when he did his descriptions.
Yeah, there was a lot more for me. That's a short segue. The big plane on a small runway.
We got Keith here at the, at the table who asked for a, a work session. He's been working on. The, well, he's got the Alcyon Estates open space over on, between eighteen hundred and fourteen. Here we are, open space here. Alcyon was subdivided, about fifty percent of it went to development. They've got, they've got a bonus density from that. In exchange for the other fifty percent going into.
You leave my phone on.
That was a bonus density from the A one zone, A one density. And so with other properties in the area going to the R one fifteen zone, I think, and I'll let Keith ask all the questions he needs to. I think Keith is looking at the possibility of, of doing the same thing, at least with the open space area. We took the original request through the planning commission all the way to the county commission. The county commissioners said. Why are we still asking this question? And I think there were just some outstanding items on phase one. That the commissioners wanted to see resolved before they took a full look at it. And so Keith's here to tell us how he plans to resolve it. And he's been working a little bit with Park District to try and. Figure out some mutual gain opportunities.
Hey, what was, what was the, refresh my memory. Sorry, I've slept since we talked about this. What? Yeah, trees. I know, I remember trees. Yeah. So, you know, that's the first thing. So I hope you've got trees on your mind.
Yeah.
And, and then I know that we talked about. Was it the standard, was it the standard amount, the standard park fee on this one for, per lot or?
It was the original amount that we were working with, the two thousand per front door. So. Where, where that's changed significantly, your, your consideration might change significantly.
It has. I can tell you that right now. It has changed significantly. The two thousand per, per lot is no. No, for me. But go ahead, give us a, give us a rundown on what you, what you want to do.
Yeah, I, I think simply put. Our, our approach is really to, as you can see, all improved development around it with. Roads stuffed in for future connectivity. Our approach is visually to figure out what's the best path forward in terms of best purpose for the land. Certainly, there's concerns, right, from any company you talk to, of course. On, on the tree thing, we, we've partnered a lot with the Parks District, met with them a bunch to talk about, hey, can we? Their suggestion is work together on a community tree day to go and get trees in. Where they're wanted in alignment with the original agreement from when this subdivision was first put in. Of course, we'd be supplying those trees. That's, that's their approach. It's more of a community thing, getting where they're wanted as opposed to a. Forced approach, if you will, putting them in curb trips that have been since they're escaped or what have you. Lots of things to make it that way. And then on the recommended donation versus fee, I'm pretty sure it can't be a fee. But our approach would be to go back retroactively to add additional seventy five hundred dollars for the twenty four lots that were put in. Plus seventy five hundred on future lots as well to. Invest in the community, invest in the vision of the Parks District and preserving trails and talking with Lance and team. Their goal is to, with, with your large park to the south being roughly a thousandth away. They would like to use the money to be able to procure other open space. It makes more sense as opposed to putting it inside of that ten acres now. We drew up a concept around everything from just kind of a copycat of what's there, right, for the south versus a. Five acre community farm type approach with a few lots around it. And we went kind of round and round and Charlie and I talked a little bit about that a while back. And. I think there was agreement from those meetings early on, there's a preference. I think the. The county and the residents are better suited or benefited by going with a, a normal RE fifteen zone if we were moving forward. As opposed to trying to put a five acre community farm in the middle of, of that.
In the middle of that parcel.
Right.
So the seventy five hundred for phase one.
Right.
Would be compensation for losing the open space.
Yeah.
And then the seventy five hundred per front door for the stuff that goes into the open space would be the, the cherry on top.
Correct. What's the potential of that?
How many, ten acres, that two point nine units, the acre? So.
One thousand units.
Yeah.
Yeah, we go up to twenty nine units if we, the, the current design, if we're going to maintain. Proper drainage and stormwater retention. You're probably more in that twenty five range, twenty six is the current concept. So we can have an appropriate sized storm retention.
The way the R one fifteen zone works is you wouldn't, you wouldn't lose a lot. They would just shrink unless you wanted to lose some. I mean, there's a. You know, law of dimensioning returns at some.
Yeah, I.
You're too small.
I think there's a balance of. Trying to maintain some of our lots as opposed to just cram them in. I think that's important.
Right, yeah.
There's light lots that are to the south of it.
Yeah.
Now, there was a discussion at one point in time about some irrigation water as well. Is that still available?
Yeah, yeah, we talked about being able to partner with the Parks District on, you know, clearly if we turn this into twenty fiveish slots. The shares we have wouldn't be required to provide pressurized irrigation. So, yeah, that could be part of the, part of the package in terms of how does this make sense, you know, in lieu of, et cetera. There certainly. I mean, and we've discussed all this in fairness multiple times and like, okay, well, what about this? What about this? I, I think it's just enough times gone by to. Kind of see where things were going with the master plan and figure out this, this approach. Yeah, I think there's, there's lots of opportunity to. To partner with the district to make sure they've got adequate water to, to take care of their park.
And this, this subdivision. Overpressurized on secondary, right?
Correct. That's already in. We would just extend it.
Right, I'm going to put you on the spot. Do you mind? So where, where you guys at? How's park districts?
In our last discussion with it, we were all in favor. Yeah, not dedicating any space to that, if that's what you're wondering. The idea being that because we have that park in such close proximity, that it would be better used. To invest in that park and make it a better facility than try to do another, if we're maintaining. So close to another one.
In a small, in a small park.
Which probably may not even have that great apartment.
Right, so.
How many total lots would it be, including phase one?
The twenty four plus the twenty nine, I guess. So whatever that comes out to be, if we ended up doing the twenty nine.
Seventy five hundred, probably should have done that in my head.
Yeah.
Well, that, that and whatever water you don't need for the subdivision, I think the Parks District can make a deal on that.
Yeah, that's actually something we were basing. Yeah, that's actually something we were basing would really like to see and the uh state would really like to see is a lot of water conservation, but water where we're intending to use it, but water in those actively useful spaces.
Yeah.
Uh, park builds and uh not so much on your side yards.
Yeah. Commissioners? Any thoughts?
I have a question, I guess, um, one of the main concerns from citizens before when we were discussing this was that those that have already bought into this community um with their original houses, if this changed, they wouldn't be able to do what they want with their lots that they currently can do, like outbuildings, things like that, would that still be the case?
Um, might need a little bit more context to the concern.
It was something like putting a shop next to, they could change property lines or like um easements, things like that, where they can put a larger shop. Or some changing real leaves, something like that, I guess, probably what I wanted to. That would be a huge concern of mine, just because if I bought into that neighborhood, I want to be able to do what I bought into it for.
Yeah, in in my mind, I think there will be more options for the landowners of the subdivision, uh, not less if it were to be redesigned at R one fifteen. Um, A A one zone is what it currently is, there's setbacks are a lot bigger than what we require in the R one fifteen. Um, where was it? Either cluster or P R U B F, I don't remember which one.
Very.
Where it was a unique um subdivision, they got reduced standards. I think the R one fifteen probably fits this a lot better than the A one zone does. The difference is, is R one fifteen applied to um these properties would affect um agricultural um uses like uh farm animals, stuff like that. I mean, they can still uh cultivate land and stuff like that, have a garden, um, but it's not, well, they're already not being able to have a horse on them now.
I was gonna say.
But extra, if you if you're in the R one fifteen, the extra can't have a horse on it.
The size of those lots does not really produce it to large animals anyway.
No. Now, and that doesn't affect or change um any of the larger parcels around it, large parcels will stay in the A one zone. So they still have all the animal rights that they currently enjoy.
How many original lots back down to those different things?
Uh, Alcion? Uh, so you got one, two, three, four, five, six? And two, well, two and a half? So we got about eight and a half lots.
And these two are the older part.
Yeah, so.
Some of the original development that was done there, right?
These four, and I can't remember if all of these ones or just a few of these were part of the original house.
Just a couple on the south end.
Okay. Part of that.
See, that this is sort of a problem that we faced, we thought we were doing a great thing with the cluster concept.
Right.
And it's still maybe it's a good idea, but right here is a prime example of what we talked about. In the end, you gotta in this case, that land's being farmed today. Uh, will not be farmed the rest of its life. So then what do we do? And to me, the logical thing is is we're breaking it down so that we can put housing in there. Because I don't see any ag operations gonna be sustained there in ten or fifteen years. And so I I think we need to work something out with them so that we can better use that space. That's my two bits.
So just to clarify, thirty four lots.
Uh, density of two point nine units the acre, um, it's close to there. Uh, it it doesn't take uh uh away the uh area in streets and in um open spaces or in stormwater detention facilities. But the R one fifteen zone is about two point nine units the acre.
Wasn't there also an issue with access, like connectivity? Like property owners own the properties where like where that cul-de-sac is currently, right? They can't get through that.
Yep. Yeah, so as far as I understand it, the cul-de-sac uh there on the eastern side, it does about the property, you might be able to get like a pathway connection. Um, something I've given Keith the heads up on, um, over in Winston, we require them to buy back two lots in a in a pathway uh through a third lot uh to make street connections and pathway connections. But their original proposal was that you would have um from and semi acres, the north south streets would connect through here. Um, this street is already connecting in through Royal or was this Bristol Farms or whatever? Um, and I think there's a street connection on Bristol either here or here. So you have a street connection that comes in um and then stubs into here. Uh, maybe we can get a pathway or if you guys would rather see a street.
This is true, makes sense.
Uh, does it make sense from a political perspective? Probably not. Does it make sense from a fifty year neighborhood perspective? Probably. But does it make sense right now? If I lived on that cul-de-sac, I'd say no.
Yeah, that's my problem, because last time this was talked, but not you, but your other counterpart mentioned him, I don't mean, and that.
Yeah, we.
Is a huge no for me, I I don't like that at all.
Yeah.
I don't see it coming even.
Yeah, you, you have the connectivity there, right, that's into the the property of the north, um, you see the two lots. And then uh that that's there. I, I'm kind of on the fence, like I from a development standpoint, could you connect it? Yeah. Um, from disruption to neighbors and impact, does it make sense to do that? Probably not for me to decide, I I would say probably not, but I I think the walking trail in terms of what the Parks District vision of connecting areas that way, I think that's very doable, I think that makes sense.
You guys remember this cul-de-sac here?
That's up in uh.
You know, the islands.
The islands, yes, I do.
Few years, this is before, pre-general plan, actually, that's interesting. Um, where the general plan showed that fifty nine fifty should curve down and connect into twenty uh two fifty between, um, well, time goes by, a big mansion is built and a few other homes are built. Can't really make that connection in, and so they brought that connection straight down um back in the day when this mansion was put in. But when this area was built, they didn't want to make that connection, even though the county had the right of way. We had all that we needed and the landowner uh of this property was the landowner of all of it. Uh, it was always planned for a street uh to go through and um instead they said, well, what if we did a a pathway connection? Um, now the planning commission asked for a pathway connection, the landowner and the landowner's agent pushed really hard back on that. Um, tried to let us know that there's no reason for a pathway and there are no kids who live east of home beach, so there's no reason to uh put that in. Um, we have people coming into our office all the time who live up fifty nine fifty saying how grateful they are that the kids can finally walk to school. Uh, so something to think about.
Yes. I think.
I really like street connectivity for the sake of connecting communities to each other, however, in some ways less street connectivity and more pathway connectivity might actually make a healthier community, because maybe you get in the car a little bit less to drive to your neighbors.
In the discussion of this one, does a pathway connectivity impede on private property?
It's a good question, and I I don't know how much, if any, that the county uh owns in terms of right of way on that hedge, so we'd have to.
Yeah, but that strip, that strip of home property can't be very wide.
Right, I'm lost.
We're talking.
It would, yeah, it depends out.
I don't think we.
Private nonetheless.
On that, from what I remember, I think the two properties, they connect.
Hmm.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they do, and I mean, for me, if I was the landowner, I would say I'd rather have a a trail or, you know, a pathway. So, yeah. Pay me what it what value that is, and then I don't have to have a road going through there. Not just me personally, doesn't mean they share those same buildings, they can not want anything. When I think about it, still their private property, which has been a big discussion in these meetings lately, and we want to respect that property, so.
The, the benefit though here, or the ask, is not unreasonable.
Yeah, I'm not saying.
Because now we can go talk to the property owners and say, hey, this is kind of what we'd like to do here. And it's a property owner, so.
Things are your disagreeing.
You guys remember over on uh Winston, um, that was a two to one vote at the council or a commission. Uh, the nay vote was because uh one of the commissioners wanted to see a road stubbing to the west and not a pathway stubbing to the west. And the reason, the reason that he gave for that was that originally we tried to push the um uh developer to put that in and the developer did not want to, really refused to do it. And as I said, you know, he's slept in his, he made, he made his own bed, he's gonna sleep in that. Um, however, we did get a pathway there and that pathway is translating over Taylor Landing, phase six was just recorded the other day. We'll see some houses going up on that property here pretty soon. And they are required to connect to that pathway, which means you will have a pathway, not a street, but a pathway connecting thirty, well, almost thirty five hundred west. You got one more parcel to get through, um, if that landowner ever chooses, so, but thirty five hundred all the way to the park. Through the park, through, um, cause phase five, they're now gonna be punching it through uh Taylor Landing Phase five to the high school.
To the high school.
Basically, good. Yeah.
It's nothing to other.
Really connects that community.
Better than it was.
Yeah.
Well. Anything else, Commissioner? It's not, it's not unreasonable to ask.
It's like, I wasn't, I wasn't even contesting that at all.
So. And no, I'm asking if you want that to be.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think they should ask for something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Looks like right now it comes to the very tip of that circle is a point at the common property line. So you'd have to be very skinny to be able to use that part of the pathway.
That's new law.
Slight subway.
I just want to be respectful of the current landowners. With this type of development where they got what they wanted originally from a right, this, to me, even if I'm thinking of the whole beginning of however much they're gonna contribute to the parks, I think it should be just, just personally, I think maybe they should add you up and be a little bit more, because they're basically redeveloping something that was already developed, but through and the discussions with commissioners and everything else has always been, it's gotta be something that really benefits the community and exceeds that benefit, so it's above the norm in my opinion, so.
Sweet.
So Charlie, what was the discussion in the meetings on that? Was there?
Pathway.
There was a pathway.
Yeah, but I mean.
Represented in that meeting.
In in those previous meetings, yeah, but never got to a final decision.
Okay.
So.
All right. Or how much, what would you want, ten feet there for a pathway?
Well, we we want to top the landowners.
Well, of course, but I mean, one forehand, but for practical uses as a pathway.
What the code requires right now is either fifteen feet and the developer building the fence or thirty feet and the landowners can build the fence, uh, and it could be whatever fence they want. If it's fifteen feet and the developer builds the fence, it's gotta be a certain kind of fence. You're trying to make sure you got eyes on that pathway, so you don't have this alleyway that uh people can do the various, kids can do the various things of. But over on Winston, where they had to buy back a portion of the lot to 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 get that pathway connection in, we only asked for twelve there. So then it fits a tenth of like, hey, pathway.
Have you guys considered this in, in the path, a pathway there in your, in your meetings?
I haven't been involved in special.
So, okay.
I think it's a great idea if we can provide the additional connectivity though. Personally.
Yeah. So. So there's something to add to your list.
Okay.
Do that then. Anything else, Commissioner, staff? Any other thoughts?
Casey had a question about your, your comment on the ante up. Uh, with the donation of seventy five hundred dollars to the Park District for the new homes, that would just be kind of our that's our negotiation, like that's the, if you wanted to upzone, you need to give the community something here. Um, would the ante up be, would you be comfortable with the ante up being that they're also gonna contribute the seventy five hundred for the previously planted lots?
For me, I feel like that puts them on neutral.
Okay.
Because now they're wanting the same, they want the new standard. Then it should be, okay, then you're at the news, what that new standard would be would have been all those.
Worked it.
Right, you've already got it, you've already, I hate to say like went the right way. You already got what you wanted originally, now you're coming back wanting more, which there's nothing wrong with that, I mean, that's business and maybe it is best for the community, maybe it is. Like I look at, I used to live in the Royal and there was a big spot like this that is literally just a tumbleweed patch now, because it was farmed and their house is built all around it, nobody knows anything with it now. People want the open space, but now everybody in that neighborhood complains about it being a dump, because it is. However, doesn't mean that that's what this neighborhood wants. I, I'm sorry, I've gone off on tangent, but way too far. You got what you wanted originally, now you're trying to come up and um get more out of what you already had for that land. So I think that the county and the residents should get more.
Right. And that's why I mentioned the water shear. I think, I think there should be at least water that goes with this thing as well, because I I think you're right on what you said, I agree with it.
And I know that Commissioner, I hate to throw this in, but in the meetings we've had, public meetings, he's said the same thing, he's wanting to prove why it's better for the community, so.
Yeah, he's been pretty, pretty adamant about that, it's been good to see. Okay.
And a pathway. I mean, maybe, maybe if it's a pathway, if if the.
Yeah, I think a pathway would be great.
Remainable to it, you know, I mean.
I think we missed a couple of opportunities, uh, cause we were looking at Bristol and the possibility of getting Bristol Farms, some good pathway connections through this as well, but that went forward and this one stalled, so we might have missed that, but we can get a little bit in, do what we can. Cool. Okay, so you guys will probably see, probably Keith, I'm assuming something fairly similar to what was originally proposed.
Yeah, I I was gonna ask you what what next steps look like then.
So what we can do is we could bring that back to the planning commission, remind the planning commission what their original recommendation of the counter animation was and see if they want to add anything to that or up the ante, I guess. Right.
And then there will, there will be, so the public can.
Yeah, that'll be, we'll make public hearings for those.
Right.
Yeah.
It'll go through its process.
We'll send out notices to the neighbors.
It's an awesome part, part.
Right, I mean, everybody. Want to probably say something, so they're going to notice, and I just have to chat.
I only got one notification, probably guys got any of the changes, like by email or by email, I'm signing up for them. Hope that I can get any, make sure I get those notifications.
I just want to make sure that your mailing address is permanent of the county.
Yeah, we'll sign up for it.
Okay, that's what we call up. So then you've got to be within a certain amount of feet of a development to get a a notice mailed to you too, correct?
Yep.
We, we know, so, so this, so you so that you know, this is a work session, I don't think work sessions are noticed.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Is that.
Oh, no, yeah, not this.
Yeah, it's about. As it goes forward through a public process, and this is a public process, but as it gets more formal, then you'll get those, those.
We've, there's been public, there are public meetings in the past and I signed different one with the website and I haven't gotten one notification around me.
Go to the Utah notices website and sign up there for anything that's Weaver County Planning Commission and permission. You'll get those emailed to you and then make sure you open it up and look at the agenda. And the agenda will have the items all listed out there and then you can determine and if you need to make a phone call or look something up, cause you're, it's questionable, is what it is, then you'll be able to see it. But normally they list addresses and it's, it's pretty straightforward.
What was it, Utah notices?
I think it's Utah notices.
Yeah, if you just do Utah public.
Yeah, definitely, if you Google that, you'll, you'll, you'll get it. And and all it, all it really requires is an email address and it it sends a mime on it and I actually I quite like it, so.
It operates very much like a government site, so if you have any issues, give us a call from the planning office, we'll, we'll help you get there. I'm not aware of whether or not our county website has a sign up. Um, do you?
Not that I'm aware of, no. We normally direct people to the state website.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, good question. Okay. All right, Ken, well, I think we've, we've done that now. We do have a crowd here tonight and I love to see people turn out. Do we, you, are we interested in hearing what, you know, maybe, maybe get a sample of what's going on, what? It was at this, was it this particular item that you're all here for, was there something else? Oh, okay, all right, good, good, all right, well, then that answers that question. Stay tuned for what's gonna happen going forward. We've, we've accomplished everything that we were uh set to accomplish tonight, so watch the public notices and hopefully you'll get your notices. And then we'll go from there. And thanks for coming, it's good to see people, we, like I said, we normally don't see people, especially at work sessions, so it was great, thank you. All right, anything else?
Uh, I do. Yes. So, Em was reappointed.
Yay.
Yay.
Rick would have you, we talked the other day, oh, there, uh about something that needs to be on next week's work session. So the commissioner was asked, commissioners looked at the uh.
Westbridge.
Commissioners look at Bennett um just last Monday, Bennett, sorry, I don't know if they changed the name before or after, but the Gibson Farm uh developed it. Um and there are a couple little adjustments that um they've been talking about, I just wanted you guys to talk about that. In a work session, just before they take any action, right, see if you guys have a lot of.
And I think Rick mentioned, we have a work session out.
Yeah, we'll do it, we were, they did want to get it on this meeting tonight.
Oh.
But we just couldn't do that, it'd be twenty four hours.
Right.
Make everything work, so it'd be next week.
Yeah.
That we would do that, and it would just be like Charlie mentioned, it was the work session, and. Um you guys have already made a decision on it, so um we're just bringing you back to kind of inform you, and if there's any comments you have, we'll just relay those back to the commission. But we really can't add that to your motion, because your motion is not even there.
Right, and and I just wanted to add to that, but going a little bit different direction, I've been attending a lot of the work session meetings of commission. Over the last, I don't know, six weeks or eight weeks or something. I think pretty much all of them, because I want, I've been kind of curious about how these big projects, Westbridge and Bennett Farms. Were gonna be received by the commission and, you know, kind of kind of be aware of what was going on at there at that level. And I just want to say, and I hope, I hope what I'm saying isn't uh. Isn't um overemphasized, but I really think that that our commission. Uh respects what this planning commission does. Um and it and it came to, they're asking in Monday's meeting about, you know, a little bit of a review just for feedback purposes.
Yeah.
On the uh M D A for Bennett Farms, but I think they trust us and um. It's it's kind of, it's kind of nice to have that feeling, and if I'm out of wine, you guys know better, you're around it more than I am, but.
No, not at all.
But uh.
Yeah, we've mentioned that several times, how much they appreciate you guys and what you do, and um right now we have a very. Um diversified and functioning planning commission, so you get different points of view that collaborate on different things. And while you may not always agree, at the end of the day, you guys come to a a decision that. I think you have the best interest of the community at heart, and that's what the commission wants.
Thank you, and and it it's it's really almost palpable uh in those commission meetings, there's a lot of respect there. Um for the planning commission, so I don't know, I I'm, Wayne and I were a part of this at a time when. When there was a border, and uh and so it's it's kind of nice to have grown to to a point uh. Haven't been here, was, I don't know if that's a good thing or not, but haven't been here long enough to actually, you know, see that. Um so it's 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 kind of, it's kind of nice, so I appreciate it, I want you to everybody know that, your work isn't unnoticed, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Now, if we could just get Charlie to read back this.
I forgot your last thing, I was gonna say, Commissioner uh Neville, but I'm sad to say Casey, because I couldn't. Mr. Casey. As long as I don't have to call you out, yeah.
All right, I think that's that's it for tonight, thanks, everybody, appreciate it.